Court on.
All right. Call the meeting to order. Do we have? Any visitors? And would you introduce yourself? Rob.
I'm Rob Spurco, community member.
Anyone else? Welcome, Rob.
Who's Reese? Reese?
Reese W., who is that?
I don't know. Does anyone know who Reese W. is?
Well, welcome. You can turn off your mute and talk to us and be okay.
Michelle's iPhone. Who is that?
No, no.
I'm a community member.
Michelle?
Hi, I'm a community member.
Do you have any, do you need to make comments or anything before we start?
Tell us who you are and you want to.
No, I don't think so.
Okay.
Okay.
Think everyone else is staff. Kathy, who is our other Kathy down here? Got Elizabeth Large.
Kathleen Christie.
Here comes Angela. No, I got Kathleen Christie. Kathy, there's a a member in the meeting whose name is just Kathy. I don't know who that is.
It's Kathy Thompson.
Oh, okay.
Sorry, I was having a hard time with this old computer.
Okay, I was trying to figure out who that was, sorry, to make sure we had everybody.
Okay, great. Does anyone, any visitors want to make any comments? You have two minutes if you'd like to. We're open for questions or comments. Okay, hearing none, then let's proceed. Want to get an approval on the minutes of January meeting? Has everyone had a chance to read the minutes? And are there any corrections, updates to the minutes?
No.
I have, I have one that I would like.
Okay.
Kathy, I have one that I would like you to chip to make an adjustment to. And that's where Kathy Hammond made a motion to fund the roof with the sixty-six thousand two hundred and fifty. It was not funding the roof, but it was funding the the survey blueprints and the what's the proper word? The maintenance of the project was not the cost of the roof.
So how much?
Anybody else have?
How are we gonna pay for it?
We don't.
It's, we don't know. We haven't gotten the price of the roof yet until, until he does a total survey and find out how much it is.
It costs sixty-six thousand for the survey?
No, no. The documents that were in the packet last month were Chris's contract. And he is going to oversee the project management, be responsible for the drawings, for doing the labor and managing the project. So that sixty-six thousand is covering the entirety of that part.
So he will, he will go out and find the people who are going to be installing and take the bids on it, et cetera. And then run it through the county and then supervise it and make sure it's installed properly.
That seems like a lot of money.
The roof is going to.
It's not bad.
No.
Roof is. It's not bad when you consider how much is involved.
Right.
And how long this is.
Yeah, it doesn't include any of the roof, you say? That's just the project management? Maybe I'm missing something.
Yes, Susan, this was covered in our meeting last month, and there was a whole proposal in that.
Right.
So the whole scope that we're talking about is described in that document.
But now we're changing the minutes. That's where I'm confused.
No, 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 we're just, he's just correcting the minutes because the approval reads that the fund balance was moved to fund the new roof, when it actually wasn't. It was moved to fund the new roof project management.
Okay.
Okay, does that make sense?
I guess. I was just, that seems like a lot for project management not to include any of the roof.
Well, I think the cost of the roof is probably going to run you a million dollars.
Oh, my gosh.
And there are a lot. It's going to be a very big project.
Yeah, and that again, that was in the packet last month.
Right, right, right. And I agreed with it then. I just don't remember all those details, so I just.
Okay, any other questions? No, no.
I hear you, Susan. Okay.
It is a lot of money.
A month is a long time ago.
There's a lot involved.
So I accept the mess with what they correction.
I second it, Susan.
All in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? Minutes are approved. Thank you. All right, moving on for my report. We've met on the boilers. I think Casey's going to talk about that a little bit in her report. But the boilers are out of order and she'll discuss that. One of the things that we did find when the, when Dakin, the boiler people were out, was that the existing boiler that works did not have a proper setting on it. The sensor that was worked was not working and only allowed the library to heat up to sixty-seven degrees. And then shut itself off and didn't allow it to.
Was that for call service purposes?
They have corrected that problem now, finally. I don't think it was, I think it was just because that sensor has been broken for I don't know how long. And the maintenance guys didn't, didn't knew that it would go to sixty-seven, but it wouldn't go any higher. And they just thought that that was a setting that it was supposed to be. And so anyway, we've straightened that out and that is working. We also had a meeting with Chris Soros about the restrooms, and we'll talk about that later. And I have had a quarterly meeting with two out of the three municipalities, with the mayors and the finance directors. I finished Alcoa and Blood County. And so they are up to date on what we're doing and what we're proposing for the future. I plan on doing that quarterly with all of them. I have Mariville's tomorrow morning at nine o'clock.
Andy, are you going to provide us feedback?
Really, nothing much has come out of it differently. I was just going to tell you, the only feedback I've had, we went over this.
They're all on board?
We went up, we covered the sustainability plan. Yes, they are. Well, Greg has his. One of the things that we found out was the county didn't know that we were only open fifty-seven hours a week. That was, that was their big revelation. At the library. They thought we were still open regular hours. Now, I just don't understand how they would not know that, but anyway.
Not if you read the news.
I also have instructed instructed Casey from now on to send minutes of our meeting to the three municipalities, so they have a copy of it and her write-up. So they will know what's going on in the future, hopefully. And I've scheduled a meeting. Yes.
I'm sorry, complete, complete. I have a question after you finish.
Okay, I scheduled a meeting with Mark Johnson from Alcoa to tour the library, because he said he had been there for a long time, and he would like to have a really tour of what the library looks like and how it works, which I think is great. Okay. Okay.
Question. Did you by any chance talk about the discussion they had a while back about bringing Townton, Rockford, Friendsville into the fold and their participation, i.e. maybe some funding?
I had that discussion with the county, but not with Alcoa or Mariville.
Okay.
And basically, the county said good luck. I'm still open to that, and I will try to make an appointment with them and go talk to them. Friendsville seems to be doing a lot more all of a sudden, so I think it would be a good, good.
Okay.
Rupert, thanks for reminding me of that. I will, I'll follow up on that.
Okay. Thank you.
Andy, if I may.
Thank you.
If I may say something over here, Andy, whenever the, you know, stating the obvious here, I guess. But whenever any tours to the library, I think it would be really, really beneficial to highlight how much we have done on virtual, like the online programs that we have. And like I said, I know I'm stating the obvious here, but I think that's really important in how that even organizations can benefit from, you know, the courses like Lynda.com and such. Just a little plug in there for, on those tours, I think that would be really good to highlight.
Yeah, and I would reiterate that just looking at the article, the letter to the editor today in the paper about what our people are doing at the library, you know, basically, the assumption is they're not doing very much. So I think, I think emphasizing all of the innovations that we have put into place and the kind of man hours that it takes to do that. We don't have everybody just sitting around doing nothing, really. That would be important, too, to correct that misconception when you adjust it.
I think you're right, Susan. I think people still look at the library or librarian as a person who sits behind a desk and checks out books.
Right.
And that's their, that's their function.
Yeah.
And I don't think they have any concept. I know, talking to Casey this morning, I've totally forgot about the people who are buying new books and putting them on the shelves and logging them in and creating the new programs and all the other things that are going on in the library. And I know that the councilmen don't know that at all.
Yeah.
So anyway.
What if you put it in a percentage format?
In what way?
Well, books are twenty percent of what you do now versus online programming is twenty percent versus, you know what I mean?
Okay, that's a good idea.
That might put it in.
Casey or Ajahn A, could you, could you do that for us? I'd like that as part of my report to them. That'd be great.
As long as we're crystal clear that online doesn't mean the staff's not doing anything. Okay, I mean, as an online faculty member who teaches exclusively online, I mean, it's really easy for people to make all kinds of assumptions. Well, then, then you're home free. You're online.
It takes twice as much time to speak online.
Yeah.
I want to say this. I think next month's segment of this sustainability plan will be where we talk about the reassignment of work tasks. And the percentages, I think, will come out there as just part of that report for y'all to look at. So we'll make sure we add that, but that's going to be what next month's discussion is going to be about. And next month's action will be what work tasks are going to look like moving forward and how much time will be allocated, et cetera. One of the, one of the things that keeps coming out in the newspaper articles, and I hear people say it, is everybody in the library is going to do everything. That is not correct. Everyone in the library will work on the customer service desks.
Right, yeah. Yeah, that's a good point, Kathy.
When they're not on the service desk, they will be doing their jobs, which will still be very complex like they are now.
That's a good point, because that is an assumption.
Yeah.
Okay, that was the end of my report. Again, I meet with Mariville tomorrow. And of course, I'll ask them for more money again, but we'll see.
Good luck.
Okay, moving on. Casey, we have your report.
Sure. Everybody get a chance to look at the written narrative. I'll just hit the highlights. Our, our big social media campaign over Valentine's was Spooky Steve, the book bachelor. Did anyone get a chance to look at any of those? That would mean no, nobody looked at them. What did you think, John? What did you think?
Done, Ben.
Well, they were funny, but you know, I looked at them this weekend. I'm not a fan of the bachelor, but you know, they were funny. They were entertaining. I got a kick out of them.
I thought they were really cute. We are trying to do readers advisory in some manner or another every month through virtual resources. We're getting ready to launch our youth services programming every Saturday at two-thirty, be virtual. And of course, the facilities project, the two boilers, will go for a vote on Thursday for approval by the commission. It did pass the budget committee. And Andy talked about our meeting with Chris, and we talked about the bathrooms, the boiler replacements, the roof replacement, and we talked a little bit about soundproofing. And we also talked about the gaming space, which I'll talk more about in a little while. Chris put together the two proposals, and they're in here. Our Scottby tables were installed. And they've been used already. We're very excited. And I think, I don't know if I told y'all, but the Rotary Club is three thousand dollars away from having the money for two more tables, which will go to, will be put at the duck pond. So we're pretty excited about that. I talked to you about the budget adjustment and the assumptions. And reiterated the areas of operation that need to shift and gave you the timeline. And then I just gave you general updates. I have met with most of the staff that are going to be impacted. I still have a few more to meet with individually. And I'll be, I'll be done with that. Like I said last month, this is a very difficult time for the staff. I think most staff understand the why. But it is very painful, and having four months is going to help and give Ajahn A and I some time to help them if they want to find another part-time job. But it's it's a sad time, but it's where we need to go, I think. Any questions about my report, financial statistics?
We're going to touch on some of the other areas, the rooms and the downstairs plan later on today. Okay, any other questions or any questions? Okay, Angela, do you have a report for the foundation?
I do, but it is very brief. The foundation met on Friday. Casey came and updated us on the personnel plans for the library, and Andy came and updated us on thoughts on future directions for facilities improvements that the foundation board might take on. But we're focusing our work in the next few months on getting out a steady stream of small publicity bites that just keeps awareness in front of people of the foundation and what it does. I think we're probably going to start that with an electronic rebroadcast of the paper letter that we nailed in December. And then we're going to do a feature on each of the projects that was in that letter as an item in the electronic newsletter that the library sits out. So we're thinking that just being able to get a little bit of information on what we've done and maybe tie in some customer comments or the availability for people to tell us both what they've thought of those projects or what other new things they might like to see in the library will be kind of our focus from now through early summer. And we are also starting to think about what if we are able to host some sort of event and plan for what we might do for in-person or broadcast event-style things for the library, but that timeline is probably not until summer. And like everything else right now with COVID, we'll see what's able to be done when on that. So that's where we're focusing our energies, but if you have any suggestions for us, I would love to hear them. I'm also expecting that as all of you start to talk about facilities ideas in greater detail, that you'll be consulting us on some of those projects as well. So I look forward to hearing from all of you.
Angela? So I'm really encouraged to hear about these new outreach developments. I applaud that. And I was looking, and that sort of speaks to when I looked at, you know, you mailed out, we had been sending letters and only received twenty-five replies. I thought, whoa, something has to change. That's obviously, it was an excellent letter. And there was so much great information in the letter, but that wasn't going to be enough. So I'm really, really encouraged to see, to hear about these new initiatives. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And you're going to be working on updating the addresses and mailings also, right?
That's already done, Andy. The, the information we had in our database was basically a lot of information from a tax record rollover or dump from public records and had never really been tested or weeded for who donated money or who responded to those letters. So it was a very old information. And Eliza Knatsir has probably spent thirty to forty hours going through and doing an initial weed and checking with people to see are the people we are sending letters to still at that address or still living, all that sort of cleanup. So we actually looked at the basic value of that mailing being to clean up the list and figure out who we did get a response from. And now that we have that basic structure and cleanup in place, we can start to correct and add to that. So what we'll do as well as sending things by paper in the future, I think there are a whole lot of people who would just prefer not to get the paper in the mail, but to tell or notification. And we can pee back off of the public library MailChimp for a little bit of time and use that, things that appear there to direct people to our webpages and to opt into the foundation's mailing list. So while we'll continue to clean up a print donor database, I think we really will focus on taking a lot more of our communication initiatives online as well as in print. That seems to be where you get a bigger response or reach more people with a lower cost.
Great, thank you very much for doing that. That's, that's good. Any other questions? For the foundation? Hey, Bruce, do you have a report for us for the friends? You're muted, Bruce.
Now can you hear me? You got me?
Yes.
A couple of things I want to mention. One is that our eBay team continues to be as strong. They had another month in January that's equaled the December month of overall eleven thousand six hundred gross dollars. They are looking for more opportunities in batching lower-cost CDs and also some lower-cost nonfiction books right now. We have a woman who's coming in and putting together lists of regional books and gardening books and collectibles that we can put up on eBay and let people literally pick off a list. And it's, it's kind of quick and fast, and we've, we've sold a lot of books that way. It's kind of a new development for us. We're still planning for a March sale, members only. Appointment only is currently what we're focused on. We probably won't publicize this to the public yet or at all if we stick with members only, because that'll just be confusion. We have a members list and we'll publish that to our members. We've got a lot of interest from our members. And so that we're, we're putting together all of the thoughts needed to carry that out. We, we had an interesting spot sale last week. We have a bookseller down in Pigeon Forge that we've dealt with a lot in the past. He called Dick Burgess and said he needed books. He brought in five people. And in about three and a half hours, we packed up fifty-three books, which came to about eighteen hundred dollars. I'm sorry, fifty-three boxes came to about eighteen hundred dollars. So that was a kind of a good afternoon. We have a few other contacts. We might go ahead and do that or else do some very focused sales. But we're kind of looking at that. Donations continue at a high rate. Our, as we call them, bin divers. And people that move the books downstairs, people that scan the books, sort the books, they are staying busy with the flood of donations we continue to have. That's pretty much it, Andy. Any questions?
I was really impressed walking around downstairs and seeing how spread out you were and how much work was going on. It just is truly amazing. If any board members haven't been down there, please take a look. The work that they do is amazing, just amazing.
Thank you. And we're, we're also quite we're also quite cognizant about the individual exposures. We try to keep people spaced properly. So we're, we're we have some people that really look carefully to keep us honest and keep people spaced apart. Good job, Bruce.
Well, thank you for what you guys are doing. It's amazing.
Okay.
Liz, what's happening in the state and surrounding counties?
Make sure I unmute myself in both places. So as you can see from our report that I sent, we have a lot of trainings going on statewide, a lot of continuing education opportunities, which is a a big effort that we put in to our support for regional libraries, member libraries. I do want to focus on, and I know we've stated this before, but right now, we are really making the effort to talk to our library boards about completing the trustee certification program. If you have not had an opportunity to do that already, and I know you've had some newer board members in the last little bit that have come on who are making an effort to do that, which is wonderful. I say that because usually the tech grant applications start coming out in May, and the deadline for those is usually in July. And so right now is sort of the time to begin to look towards doing that, because you have several months where you could get those core modules completed. You'll see on there, it's the very first line on our, on our report. And the link there to register to take these on the Niche Academy platform, there are ten core modules is listed there. Our LibGuide pages are now password protected, and so you see the password under there to access that LibGuide. If you want to bypass the whole registration process, you can reach out to me and I will get it done for you, just to make it all the easier. You, once you register, you receive a welcome email from our You, once you register, you receive a welcome email from our program administrator, Matt Kirby, and the completion of this, the more trustees that are certified, the better the tech grant award is for the library. So I just want to, we're kind of reminding everybody now that we're in the, we've got a few months here to be able to do that. Some other trainings that we have had are we have coming up are of course, looking below February twenty-fourth. This is a state sponsored training on welcoming the deaf and hard of hearing patrons. We have E-rate deadline coming up for the funding year twenty twenty-one, twenty-two. That is coming up on February twenty-fifth. February twenty-sixth is our top grant deadline. I know we've talked about that. That's the training opportunities for the public. There's a little further information in the report about the top grant. This is our fourth year of doing this and partnering with the Department of Economic and Community Development. So that you, our libraries can take advantage of funding for bringing in instructors to have training, offer training classes, computer classes on lots of different subjects for the public. These could be virtual, in-person, live or recorded this year. The top grant also supports hotspots, subscriptions and video recording and editing software. The deadline for that is of course, February twenty-sixth. There is no match for the instruction funds that are received, but there is a match based on the library level from anywhere from ten to thirty percent. Depending on the level of the library for anything else besides just the instruction money. Um, the other information I included, of course, you know, the Governor Lee's Executive Order seventy-one extends the provision for virtual and electronic meetings through February twenty-seventh. And of course, as always, if we get word of that being extended further, then we'll communicate with the library director and the board chair person as well. I know you all talked about virtual programming and I believe that Blount County uses Read Squared, which is a it is a reading program, a virtual reading program and reader's advisory service that the state pays for for our member libraries. And there are a lot of onboarding training sessions, bi-monthly training sessions that are going on to to engage in that. And so we we hope our libraries take advantage of that free service. In addition, for Tennessee Reads, the consortium, just to let you know, we have an influx of magazines, of course. So we have over eighteen hundred magazine titles available to patrons with their library cards in the regional system. Other than that, of course, you see the read statistics. We got a little bit of a bump up in in January, and that's typical in December and January for us to see a little bit of a spike. Folks have a little more time to read during the holidays and they also typically get new devices to read on. So other than that, that is what we're talking about on in on the statewide level.
We had our highest reads month ever in January. Also, what it, what's going on with the state library list?
Our grand opening. We are, yes, oh, yes, I need to mention that. That's our big news. We are really excited about that. Our, we are in the process of moving, physically moving all the materials out of the old building into the new building and that's a big effort from for everybody. So we're really excited about that. I'm sure the weather didn't help today. But it's the grand opening is coming in in April, the first week of April. So we are quite excited to have that new facility.
The aren't, aren't the pictures up on the state website?
Yes, they are. So
The building is absolutely gorgeous. I mean, it's
Yes. The State Library and Archives actually has a Facebook page and recently they posted a really neat sort of before and after photograph where the state librarian and the architect back in nineteen fifty-three with the original building are in a picture at the top. And then the picture below is Chuck Sherrill, our state librarian and archivist and the current architect. Oh, I could forget his name. That's terrible. But he's, they're both standing there now. So it's a now and then photo, which is pretty neat.
Sounds great. What's the feeling about going forward with with our Zoom meetings?
I I really, I don't know. But I, we, those, those executive orders come kind of on the cusp of of the ending of the other ones. And so if it's extended, we all we're, we pay very close attention. So I will let you know immediately as soon as we hear. You're welcome.
Okay, any any questions for Liz? Thank you very much. Let's go to old business. First thing at old business is the friends restroom request. And let me go a little bit into that where Casey and Ajay and I met with Chris Soro and we walked the lower level. We had some really disturbing findings when we walked the lower level. The library, when it was built, did not have any type of wastewater system for the lower level whatsoever, nor did it have any fresh water for the lower level. Which is a I guess probably at some time was a cost savings, maybe. Right now you couldn't build a building without having wastewater disposal in a lower level. But we don't have any. And so the cost of a restroom going downstairs probably more than doubled, maybe tripled because of this. We were able to find in Ajay where there was a clean out or something for fresh water and we found that we found a freshwater source. We have no idea where it comes from or where it goes. But it's there. So maybe we can tap off of it. And we found their blueprints, but it doesn't show it. But it's there. So that will help us a little bit. But Chris is going to have to really work on some some really unique drawings and the cost expense for drilling outside of our building to go and hook up to an outside sewer system is going to be enormous. It's just a it's just something that never, never should have happened, but it's something that has to be done. It's going to have to be done for any future expansion. So one of the things that we talked about was why don't we plan for the snack bar being moved at the same time and and putting it next to where the restrooms are. So we'll incorporate all of those expenses at one time together. And hopefully eliminate a lot of expense for the future. So Casey, did I miss Ajay? I missed anything on that?
And did Chris give you a ballpark call for all of this?
No. And typically, typically I would guess would be in the two to three hundred thousand dollar range for a restroom complex. And what we planned on doing was just duplicating the one upstairs. The upstairs seems to be working fine, looks good. So we don't have to reinvent the wheel. We're just the whole thing downstairs, but we have to drill through the outside wall, the foundation and hook up to an outside sewer system. I don't have a clue in how much that's going to cost, nor did Chris. Plus, we don't know what we're going to run into. Right. When you go through the wall and go to the outside, who knows what's out there? It's just, it's just an ugly situation. But we're working on it, Bruce. And so one of these days, it's gonna, it's, we'll bring something good to the to the board. Both boards. Any other questions on the restroom?
So there's no facilities in the basement now, like for, at all?
Nothing. There is no sewer. There is, there is no fresh water. If you wanted a drinking fountain, we couldn't put it in.
We have lights.
Yeah, yeah, that was, that was really nice of them.
Prior, we didn't even have lights.
The other thing that we found, which, you know, you probably don't care, but we went over to the elevator because under every elevator I've ever installed, there's an elevator pit and there's a sewer system out of it. There isn't even one under the elevator. It's in a, it's in a separate room that I've never seen or Chris had never seen one built like that. It just, it's just truly amazing. So anyway,
Amazing is the building looks so modern and you look in the basement, it's ancient, huh?
Well, no, it's, I mean, it's
It's just empty.
But it looks, it looks, it looks really great, though. I mean, from
But you know, they also said that they put in some, some things for a stairwell to go downstairs. I mean, we couldn't find that. There's all kinds of things that, you know, they said they were going to do and supposedly is in the write-up on the blueprints that aren't there. It's just, it's going to be interesting going forward.
I just want to say that this was a PBA building and that kind of they work with a lot of subcontractors and this is not an uncommon thing, you know? This happens. So it requires immense oversight to make sure that
I think somebody was just trying to, they were probably trying to save money.
Yeah.
And not thinking about the future whatsoever. So we're going to put, we're gonna, we're gonna put in a sewer system for the snack bar. We'll put in the, we'll put in the grease traps and things that that need to be done in the future. That should have been done there in the first place. So anyway.
We need, we need to vote on the proposal that you have here, right from Chris?
We do need, we do need to look at the proposal for his management of this and creating a drawing. And there's, there's two different proposals here. One for the restroom facility. And then there is also one for the upstairs and closing the game room. So have you all taken a look at at these two proposals? The one totals to thirty-one thousand eight hundred dollars.
Right. So should we take them separately?
I think the question would be is you know, we talked to Chris this morning. If he puts them together, there is a, there is a substantial savings in labor from his, from his standpoint. And we can bid it as a total project. So the game room and the restrooms would be a total project. And the same people would bid on both projects together. And then we or separately, and then we can choose which is the best way to do it financially. And so what I would like to do is look at both of those proposals and and put them together as one. And you'll see the restroom drawings down there and the blueprints. And then the other proposal and I would like to have a motion that we would accept both of these and try to do it together.
Money's coming out of fun balance.
But you are number one. I'm going to leave it right now. Can I call you back in? I have, okay.
Was that being addressed to us or?
The the question on the floor was where's the funding coming from?
And I was hoping that we could get funding on part of this from the friends. I mean, from the, from the foundation.
Okay, are we talk, for me, there's two different questions about the money. Chris Soro's work being proposed comes out of fun balance, right? No?
We haven't, the, we have not made a decision about or even this determined where the best place to take the money is. That, that was
Even for this preliminary work?
We didn't talk about, that's something
Okay, well, I I don't know how we can vote on this without knowing where the money's coming from.
Well, I think
We're going to to do it and then we have to go and find the money.
Right, exactly. That's, that's what I would like is how, how do we want to do this? Do you want to, you want to vote on it separately? Do you want to vote on it together? And then we'll, we'll talk about the money.
I think what what the position is right now is that is, is the board even interested in pursuing this? Right now.
I'm not prepared to vote without knowing where the money's coming from.
No, 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 it's okay. I just, what we, what, what we need to know before we can move forward is if the board is interested in going this route. There doesn't, I don't think there, it doesn't have to be a vote. But just some direction as to, okay, if the board is interested in pursuing this and the next phase would be to talk about where the funding could and should come from.
What's on the table is a discussion of the proposal.
Right.
Do you guys like the ideas that were set forth and are they worth pursuing in a second discussion?
Right.
That's, that's it.
Okay, so we're not voting on the proposal tonight. Okay, all right. I would, I, I personally need to hear more about the gaming. I I support the bathroom. You know, initiative down in the lower level. I think we need that no matter what we do with that lower level down there. You know, and it would be nice to go ahead and get that much done over the next year or two, however long it takes. And it's supportive of the friends and we need to do that. I'm not sure that I fully understand the gaming proposal.
To go ahead and talk about that now outside of the order as I can.
So, so could I just build on Catherine's comments? I mean, there is evidently an overall plan for that space, I mean, for that space in the basement. The gaming room is one aspect, but futuristically, are we looking at any additional plans going forward in the future? Me, because if we had a master plan like we had in terms of expanding the building, it may help us understand the logic of, you know, doing A, B, et cetera. Casey, tell us, tell us your plan.
Yes, yes, and yes, and yes, your questions.
There is a master plan. Is, this doesn't negate the work that Chris did. This is just like an intermediary step. That's all. It's little, one of those little bites. There is only one place the bathroom can go downstairs. That's what we figured out after hours of following pipe and reading plans. So no matter what, the bathrooms have to go where they're going. The gaming space, y'all. If you'll remember, the gaming space is on the first floor. I mean, it's on the main level. And it is you know, if you're at the reference desk and you look out in the bay windows and you see the the Cusick Street and the front lawn, right? Then if you, if you were to take a left and go along the wall of the building, you'll come to another curb to the right, which is what on the plans of the library is the adult reading area. But it was, it used to have shelving in it and we cleared it out last year to make a space for gaming, for coloring and for the chess club and things like that. We used half walls that we got from Denso that were donated to us to create it. Well, we're talking about needing another rentable large meeting space. And also we had always talked about if we liked it and the gaming space weren't good, we would pursue putting a glass wall there that goes to the ceiling that mirrors the fishbowl meeting spaces, you know, have, it would look just like that, only have doors and be glass. We got to talking about we have the fifty thousand dollar donation made by Mr. Kelly for his sister. And if the board was interested in pursuing this, I was going to talk to him and see if he would approve us using that money for this, this meeting space and naming it after his sister, which I think he'll be thrilled with. And so we can put the tech in and pay for the wall with that money. And that will give us another really good usable safe space in the building.
So Casey, have a question.
Yes, how you doing?
So. This would be, this would be a, that's space that we could rent for meetings. It's not going to be dedicated. It's not going to be a space we're going to continue gaming there, right? Because I saw we were doing a lot of that online now.
Well, eventually when we come back, we will, I mean, all of our spaces we use for library programs. But right now, we only have two rooms that are big enough that we can let people meet in and we're limited to the number, I mean, you know, we can only put ten or twelve people in a meeting room right now. That's the rules. So we thought, I mean, this space would be another great space. That could be potential income producer, but also it would be soundproofed and things could happen in there that can't now.
So it'd be a potential income producer now during COVID. But when COVID's gone, are we going to, we're going to delegate that room as a meeting room that we will be getting revenues from? Or we're going to turn it back into a gaming room for, for the public?
It can be both. I mean, the gaming, the gaming sessions were scheduled. They were already scheduled. So there were times when it was allocated to that and we would still be able to use it that way. But it would also be a space that we can rent. It's a beautiful space.
It's, it's a beautiful space, but in our discussion, I thought we were definitely going to be renting it.
Yeah, we'll be renting it. I'm just saying, all, I mean, all of our meeting spaces are used for library programming as well as being rented.
Hey, Casey, when you say gaming, do you mean things like augmented reality and virtual reality? And it encompasses all the things like that?
We. We have portable gaming equipment. We don't have augmented reality right now. We would like to have it, but most of our gaming was Dungeons and Dragons and Adult Learning. And, you know, we had the chess club met here two or three times a week and held their tournaments here. So that was a big thing. But we want to put the tech in it so we can use it like our other spaces.
I think it would be interesting to consider, explore if it would speak well with any of the VR augmented reality just because that's what we're seeing happening in a lot of classrooms with a lot of STEM education too. And so it would be nice to me if we could explore that.
I think we can.
If the technology would speak well with each other in some kind of way.
Oh, yeah, that would be fine. Any virtual reality that we have will be, will be movable. We need to be able to use it in any space that it needs to be used in. So. To answer your question, yes, virtual reality can go in there and we've been talking with some of the manufacturers are actually looking at virtual reality as a way to train people.
Yeah, that's, I like that. I like hearing that. Good.
So, but I'm thinking more, you know, if we talk about virtual reality, you know, I don't know what kind of, that would be more of a classroom application probably, or even eventually something that they take home and use with their own technology. So, I mean, there's a lot that goes into that. So we, we, we got to have more conversations, but the potential will be there, yes.
One of the other things that we talked to Chris about was to vent the room so that it is ventilated, it is soundproofed and vented so that it has a much better airflow. If we put walls all the way up to the ceiling and then to take a look at the other meeting rooms that have glass walls only partial, partially way up to increase those all the way to the ceiling and putting some type of vents in there also, so it can be more private. That would be all part of this program.
We do have an issue. People need to use those spaces, but you can hear what they say all over the library. So he, he had someone over at the library today looking at the, the possibility of capping those spaces with glass ceilings and venting that. So that, that's.
So what I would like to add for the board is, is a go-ahead just pursue this, these two, these two programs, the restrooms and the same with the gaming room. And then I'll come back with proposals for money and whatever.
And where they're coming from and that kind of thing. I haven't talked, I haven't talked to Mr. Kelly. I didn't want to do that until the board said, yeah, we think that's a good idea. Go ahead and talk to Mr. Kelly.
Well, if we.
You have a question?
Yes, I'd just like to add a comment from the foundation board's perspective. The foundation board funded a lot of work to create a master plan for the library and it's in place. And it's a great plan. And I don't see that anything that is being proposed necessarily varies from that plan. But I think that it should be made very clear to everyone, but especially in any funding proposals that come our way, how what we're proposing now fits into that plan and is an incremental step to putting it in process. Because if things come willy-nilly with not a lot of justifications and we don't see how they fit into a master plan, there's going to be a lot of questions about, well, why are we doing this and not raising the money to put the master plan into place? So it's going to be very important how we set the context and how we explain what is happening is actually part of the master plan that we've always had in mind.
And Angela, I think, I think we'd be very, it would be very easy to make that case with the downstairs because, I mean, the master plan calls for bathrooms down there and also if we do provide the storage and the water, we can move the cafe down there very easily at the same time. So that does fit in to the whole.
It does. I agree completely.
That would be, that would be two, really, that would be really an important incremental step to begin with our plan and essential. Water and sewage, nothing else we can do else without that. Now, the gaming room is another question. I don't know how that fits in, but I could see, I could see making a case to the foundation for those two.
I agree. And in some ways, I think the foundation would be a little more certain of the prospect of fundraising campaign that was for an incremental step at one to one point five millions, say, than it would for saying, okay, we're doing the whole thing in one match and we need ten million. Right? That's a little overwhelming and probably not sustainable. So taking things abiding at a time is a good approach. We just have to explain what we're doing clearly.
Right, 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 right.
But what you said is exactly what we want to do. We want to, to tie into that master plan using, unfortunately, the restroom is going to go where it's going to go because that's the only place it can go. The snack bar is where it was supposedly going to go anyway. And so this will, this will be perfect for that. Not only that, but it ties into the outside patio. It ties into the restrooms and so they're all right there. It's perfect. So it really ties into that master plan well.
And I like the idea, Casey, of reaching out to your benefactor and framing that gaming area in a really nice honorable way like that. And obviously then that takes some of the pressure off of us, off of the foundation. You know, because you have that money that, that can be, you know, very targeted.
Right, and I can put his horse collection adjacent to the room. He's donated a big horse collection that we haven't put out yet because.
See, there you go.
Where we're going to put it, so.
Yeah, and with, with that understanding, I, you know, that we use the, the donation to sort of work that gaming agenda and we think about the foundation helping us with the bathrooms in the lower level, I can support both areas myself.
Yeah, and I can too, I would just suggest that in any motion that we put forward that we do couple these because if we couple these, we save five thousand seven hundred dollars in fees from Chris. So.
Exactly.
That's, that's going to be important. But yeah, I can support both of them too. It's exciting.
Okay, can I have a motion that we should go forward with this?
I'll put a motion forward that we explore further with Chris Soro. The incremental development down in the basement for bathrooms, potentially bathroom, storage, water, potentially the cafe and the gaming room. In that we coupled those two together.
Yeah, and I second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion on the motion?
I'd like to.
Bruce, you can vote on this too.
The only discussion, I guess, the, the only point, you know, with our staff reduction plan moving forward, I think that's something just to make sure that we make very clear that, you know, the, we're looking at grants and, you know, the foundation to help us with things, you know, like this. And, you know, I think that's something that we keep the narrative forward and we pass it on to the public. So there's no misunderstanding of funding, you know, that could be used for, you know, somebody's part-time to be used to create a game room, which that could, you know, obviously be, you know, pretty sad. So I think that's just, you know, and that's more for, you know, for all of us in the meeting and the board members to make sure that we are very, you know, aware of that and as we continue that it's completely separate. And, you know, we're very thankful to the foundation and, you know, those benefactors that we have, so.
This.
That's a point well taken.
Yes, and, and the gaming room narrative is it's part of the revenues plan. It was listed in the January presentation. So it's not new. It was, it was included at the beginning as a potential. So when we look at it, we, it's capital funded by the foundation and it's going to help us raise revenues. So to replace some of the ones we've lost.
Win, 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 win.
Yes.
Come over here, hey, hey, Casey, just come over here and stand still and I will put a price tag on you.
Nice.
Is there any, any more discussion on the motion? Okay, let's vote. All in favor?
We don't have a second yet, Andy.
Yeah, we did. Kathy did.
Kathy's second.
Okay.
Is there, all in favor? Could you raise your hands or say aye?
Aye.
I can see your hands, so. Three, four, five. Okay, any opposed? Okay, the motion carries. We'll proceed. Thank you. Casey, you want to talk about the hotspots policy and the internet policy?
We made the edit and I just re-included the policies. We just need board approval on them. This is the second.
Motion, we approve the hotspot policy.
Just the hotspot.
Second.
Okay.
Second.
Did I hear a second?
I second it, Lauren.
Thank you, Lauren. All in favor of adopting the hotspot policy as stated in your packet? So any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Do we have a, any questions or any discussion on the internet policy? Do we have a motion to accept the internet policy as?
I, I just had one question, Andy, first. How does this policy differ from what we've already have in place?
Auntie, you want to address that?
It has just been put into everyday language, brought up into, you know, so this time the reader is the patron. So we wanted to move away from punitive language. We wanted to move away from legalese and yet still cover our bases. So that's really the only changes. The content is pretty much the same.
Okay.
What we're saying.
It just had a very outdated language.
Great. Well, then I move. Internet policy.
Susan?
Pardon me?
Were you, were you making a motion?
I was making a motion to accept this revised internet safety policy.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Oh, we just did.
Now, there's two policies.
Okay.
Thank you, Hastings. Any discussion on the motion? Okay, hearing none. All in favor of adopting the policy as stated? Okay, thank you. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Roofing project, we want to go into the roofing project again. Talk about it anymore?
I think it was just that it, it made it through commission and we've talked with Chris and just as an update to let, where it's in the county's hands now to sign the contract with Chris and get him started.
Dawn, it's something that'll come up Thursday night and I can't see that being a problem. It's something that has to be done. And the mayor and Randy Vineyard were certainly on board with it.
Yes, and there was, there was not a lot of discussion on it last Tuesday. No, that's just kind of a cut and dry thing that has to be done. If you don't do it, it's going to cause more damage. So I think you're good on that one.
Absolutely.
It was approved back in December by the county, I think.
Yeah.
It was approved in December. The board just had to go through their.
It's not, it's not going to be an easy fix. The roofing system is a tough system to put in because of the cupola and whatever we have on the top of our building. It's not flat, which is too bad. Okay, moving right on to new business.
Andy.
The library sustainability.
Andy.
Yes.
A question. Did we, did we, did we discuss the two, two balls, we got, we got to do the two balls, right?
The two boilers request is on, it's gone to the commission.
Right, for approval.
Approved by budget committee and it gets approved, it gets presented to the commission.
Yeah.
Who's, who's?
I can talk about the boiler.
Somebody Scott.
Boiler system.
Yeah, I'm miracle.
The boiler system, let me give you a quick rundown on it. One, one boiler, the boiler system, the way it should operate is there are two boilers that heat the water. The water should be heated to about seventy-eight, seventy-nine room temperature degrees. The water is only being heated to sixty-eight maximum degrees. And one boiler system doesn't work at all. The second system has broken down three times and the thermostat on that only allows the water to be heated to sixty-seven degrees. So right now, they're going to replace both boilers. We got to, we got to cost savings by ordering both. They're going to replace them. They're going to put them in series so they'll be working together. They should save us money. The amount of heat then that goes into the, into the library will be a much warmer heat than it was before ever. And it will then take less to reheat it because it will go back in at a warmer temperature and then it will be put back in. The boilers, there was a question last time was who hauls the boilers away? There is so much good stuff in the boiler that anybody would haul it away, but the Dakin, who is going to install them, couldn't be any happier to remove them. They're going to make a lot of money off of the old boilers.
Right.
Just selling them for scrap. So they will definitely be removed. Everything will be cleaned out and taken care of and it'll be right back to a whole new system.
Okay.
The only thing, and I raised this with Dakin, that I can see going forward is, and Casey told me that the, the, there are. is, and Casey told me that the, the, there are pumps that pump the hot water up and pump the air through the building. Those pumps have not, I didn't see them being repaired under this system. Casey said that the seals and the pumps may have been repaired sometime in the past. And so if that's the case, they're good for another fifty, twenty years. So we should be great.
The county votes on that this Thursday, correct?
Yes.
Okay, I saw, I saw.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. And again, that, that comes out of our funds. Okay, let's talk about, and I'm sorry that we're going to have to stay a while, but let's talk about the sustainability plan. I have presented both, both the county and to the, to Alcoa City, this sustainability plan, and they have both signed off on it. And again, I'm presenting it again to Mariville, who has signed off on it already once. So moving forward.
Okay.
Andy, see.
I'm, I'm ready. Can y'all hear me okay? Um, okay, if I'm going to, I'm going to take you through, I shortened it. I'm going to take you through the slides. And then as we get to each slide, this time I want you to ask me questions as we get to the slide, okay? Everyone knows that the, the reason we're doing this is because we have to increase efficiency in our staffing so that we can find $200,000, which is not available in our operating income. Just, I like to throw the mission statement up there because we do great things. All right, this is from our, the original presentation and just outlines that we're at the first action, which is staff reduction. And then next month will be the staff structure. And in April will be a new revenues plan for moving forward. So our proposed adjustments are. We're going to eliminate, and I made a, I made a mistake here. We're going to eliminate nine part-time positions, not eight. Okay, one staff member has been on a leave of absence since COVID and probably would not come back anyway. We have two staff members that declined the option to work full-time, not one. I left them out. So two decided they did not want to work full-time. One staff member currently has another full-time job. The remaining five staff members are all retired, have another source of income and are limited in the number of hours that they can work in a week. So.
Question about that, Casey. Does that mean that the final five members, that they're all retired? That they all have another source of income and they don't want to work? Or is it that?
They're limited.
Okay, I know, but does it mean that they all five meet each one of these provisions? Or is it that all are either retired, have another source of income and/or cannot work?
All five meet that criteria, all the criteria.
All, all the criteria. Okay.
So essentially, we have been able to shift any of the part-time staff that could and wanted to work full-time into time, all right? So the second part of that is that eight of the, the remaining eight part-time positions that we have had filled have been moved to full-time. Three of the positions have already been moved into full-time positions that were vacated. Okay, so we're, we're creating the other. Five from, from funds that we have. That's part of the reduction. So we are eliminating, or we're, we're eliminating eleven staff. Now, what you need to realize is that we had, our full staff is fifty-three people. We have not had fifty-three people for months and months and months. And we did not fill positions. We only filled the positions we felt like we need, needed to fill to operate during COVID because of some of the limitations. A couple of our staff members have had disabilities or issues with their health where they could not work in person. So they've been working at home. So they haven't been available to cover customer service desk and things like that. So, I mean, it's, it's a very complex kind of moving target situation. But I, you know, while I'm not happy about having to, to lay off people, I am happy with the chain of events that made it possible for us to keep everyone who wanted to stay and could work full-time. Any questions about this slide? Y'all going to have to, you're going to have to say something because I can't see you all on my screen.
No.
Okay, all right, so.
I do. I'm sorry, I was muted.
I'm sorry.
I just, I don't have a question. I just have a, a, a comment. Based on this plan, you're going from the fifty-three, which you're, you're not at right now, but you have historically been near that. You're at forty-four currently, and that's a combination of full-time versus part-time. And at the end of this plan, you're planning to be at thirty-three.
Thirty-three full-time.
Right. And, and so I just think it's important that we acknowledge that the staffing is going down and pretty dramatically. And, you know, and that that's where a lot of the efficiencies and things like that, the cost savings, the $200,000 you need to save and that kind of thing. I mean, that's, that's a pretty dramatic change.
Yes.
The key here, Kathy, is that you, Casey, you believe at the thirty-three full-time, you can do what you need to do.
Right, I'm going to show you that. I'll show you that in the next slide. And, and you may have more questions, but that will help explain it. So here's our service hours breakdown. With the proposed plan, we'll have twenty-five service staff, four administrative staff and four maintenance staff. A total of sixty-eight thousand, six hundred and forty hours. That's thirteen hundred and seventy-two hours a week. And it breaks down. As shown up on the slide. So if you look down at the bottom, at fifty, for a fifty-seven hour week, we need six hundred and thirty-nine service desk hours or thirty-one thousand, nine hundred and fifty hours annually, which is going to eighteen thousand, six hundred and forty hours for programming, staff development, all those other services that we, we work on. At a seventy-hour week, we'll need seven hundred and eighty-six service desk hours or thirty-nine thousand, three hundred hours annually, which will be twelve thousand, seven hundred hours for programs and services. Now, can we operate on thirty-three full-time staff indefinitely? No. How many full-time staff will we need to move forward? I'll be able to tell you next month. But I don't have a choice. I have to find the money. So the only thing I know to do is to improve efficiency. And to do that, I am eliminating the middle level of management completely. So all these twenty-five service staff will be dedicated to working with the public. And providing services, resources, training, instruction. Et cetera.
So, Casey, so what you're saying is that you're doing this to meet your $200,000 shortcut?
Yeah, I have to.
So, so going forward, if money shows up to address that $200,000, do you move to another position?
We won't. I'm sorry, go ahead.
In terms of staffing?
Yes, as we have more revenues, we will work on adding more full-time staff.
Okay.
Okay. I, I just want to say that most, most public libraries do not have part-time staff. Just like you don't have part-time teachers in a classroom. You know, it's just, it's very difficult and time-consuming to manage a large number of part-time staff. It eats into a lot of your productivity and your end product is not as strong educationally. The library is an educational entity. It's not a place to check out books. That's just one of the things that happened here.
Disagree with you a little bit on that because in the city school system, all of our TAs, except special ed TAs, are part-time. And I think most of our cafeteria workers are part-time. I think it just depends on what job they're doing. The TA's job is not as complicated as a librarian's job and a cafeteria worker's job. I think it depends on the job.
Exactly.
And, and training, training and all that.
Yes, but we're asking all of our full-time staff to be. To have the capacity to be able to serve on all the customer service desks, which means their educational levels and experiences are going to be a lot of tech, high-tech, no matter what. They're going to need to know how to use all of our systems, how to work with people, how to point people to resources, those, you know, those first contact support areas. So one of the issues we have, I would say that ninety-nine percent of my customer service complaints and I, pre-COVID, I would probably get three or four a week. Since COVID, I've gotten one. Because all the staff have been working on all the service desks. But what the issue is, is that when a customer comes in with a problem and the person they get isn't in the building enough to have experienced that problem or isn't on the desk with someone who has experienced it. Because maybe they're only in the building eight hours and they're working with someone who's only in the building ten. Then that's where you get your, your point of conflict because they can't take care of the problem. So it's going to be a lot more efficient to have, to keep our master schedule like we've been doing. And to work on the cross-training for those customer service desks.
Casey, I had a question on this line. I'm sorry, I'm trying to make, like, put the numbers together and stuff. You're saying for a fifty-seven hour week, we need thirty-one thousand, nine hundred and fifty hours annually. And right now with thirty-three full-time employees, we would have sixty-eight thousand, six hundred and forty, right?
Right.
Um, so taking that off, that leaves thirty-six thousand hours, six hundred and ninety. And you have sixteen thousand, sixteen thousand, six hundred and forty hours for programming. What's the?
I think I did a math error. Thank you for catching that. The spreadsheet that we were working on had numbers all over it. Hey, Auntie. Well, you've got to take out the sixteen thousand for administrative and maintenance because they don't work on programming. So that's part of it. Maybe that's it. Yeah, that's it. You see, Jesus?
So that leaves, so there's a, so where's the twenty, twenty thousand hours? Where, what's the $20,000?
Your administrative staff and your maintenance staff don't do programming.
Gotcha.
Okay. That's where it is.
So. Casey, I have a question. At the bottom of the chart, we have a fifty-seven hour week and a seventy-hour week. Are we proposing to go forward with a fifty-seven hour week with the thirty-three full-time, full-time librarians? Okay.
Yes, yes.
How long can we sustain that and maintain our MOE? I thought we had seventy.
When the state says we have to go back, we'll go back. Hopefully, by the time we have to do that, we'll be able to have, you know, another person.
Would one person make the difference though between fifty-seven and seventy hours?
No, but it would help. I mean, I, you know, it's really hard for me to just sit here and tell you for sure how things are going to work.
Right.
We're doing them and we begin to put services back and, or people begin to ask for more services, I guess is what I'm trying to say. Right now, we know we can manage it because we're doing it. I just, I wish I could say for sure, yes, I can say I think so. Remember that I want to come back over this and try to get that high school internship program implemented.
Okay.
You know, I, I don't know. On paper and thinking about how we're scheduling and maintaining staff in terms of where they are and what they're doing work-wise. It should be okay.
Good.
We, we will not be able to jump right back up to the levels of service that we were providing before in terms of number of programs and that kind of thing. But that doesn't mean we won't do any. And I'm not sure at this point what the demand is going to be, given that we've moved to virtual and people are used to it in so many areas. Doesn't mean that staff time's not needed, but staff time is used differently. We will still have our big events when we can go back. We, we can still have our, our mini-con and our Cormac McCarthy Festival and our hot summer nights because those are not programs that take a lot of staff time. Once they're, once they're, when they're being managed, you know, when they're, when they're actually implemented, they, they take staff time in the planning and the setup. But the programs themselves involve the community, so. I know that didn't answer your question, but.
Yeah, I'm just wondering, I'm just concerned about, let's say, a year from now, the state comes back and says. You know, and, and this doesn't mean I don't agree with, with the plan you have going forward. I mean, I can see this is a good plan to go forward, but I'm concerned that in a year from now, they say, wait a minute, you're, you're not meeting MOE. You're, you're open fifty-seven hours a week. And then I, I hope we have a little breathing room right now to anticipate that point. And maybe Liz can help us, alert us to when that point shifts so that we have a plan of how we go forward to meet the MOE.
If I had to make a guess, I would say that we will have to return to our MOE after the first of next year at some point in the next, in spring. Liz, what do you think?
I, I, I have no idea.
We still have a lot of libraries closed, don't we?
We, we, we still have libraries all over the place across the entire state when we have our weekly conference calls, you know, and, and then, and then you have those that might have to have closures for, for exposure. And so it's back and forth and back and forth. And I, I wish I had a crisp ball to tell you when I think that will be, everything will be normal again, but I don't. But I definitely, you know, anytime I hear anything, I will absolutely communicate that.
Okay, thank you.
Any, any other questions about this particular service hours breakdown? Okay, so this is what the budget allocation will look like. This shows you, and now this allocation is what's on paper, what the county gave us for 2021. Our staffing allocation was 1.69 million. Our benefits was three hundred and nine, two thousand operations. This is now we're, what we're spending, five hundred and sixty-three thousand, capital thirty-eight. So we had a total appropriation of 2.685 million. Our maintenance of effort is 2.461 million. Our estimated library revenues for this year is only 50,000. So that gave us this year at 2.511 million. We're not projecting we're going to get any more. So the shift in where the money is being spent works out to staffing will be 1.418 million. Benefits will be 4.98 million, and that is a jump because we did add some part-time people, but also we've got retiree benefits in there as well. Operations allocation, five thirty-one. Five hundred and thirty-one thousand capital we took to zero because we figured out that our capital money we're, we're paying for with our revenues. So if we have a problem, we're going to have to go to fund balance anyway or hope that we have revenues to cover it. So we just talking with Laura at the county, she said we really didn't need to have it because we're not getting capital money from the county. Like all the other. Like all the other budgets are because we're not part of their fund balance. We are getting our capital from revenues we raise. So we can always move money down if we need. So our total appropriation would be two point four nine nine million. Maintenance of effort will stay the same, revenues will stay the same, we'll have the same available funding. So where the changes are happening besides the salary adjustments, retiree benefits, three hundred and thirty-eight thousand, seven hundred thirty-six, and that's because the people that have retired starting next year in July, we will have to pick up their medical benefits until they are, are on Medicare. Decrease the capital utilities, we've adjusted down to a hundred and twenty-one thousand. So we've made, and we've been working on this through the year, but, but we've, we have recognized the significant cost savings from the lighting project and from our new chiller and we think the boiler will be even better. But we've always had a little float there, so that float will be gone. We have held the library books line at a hundred thousand. Typically, it is two hundred thousand or a hundred, a hundred and ninety thousand. But we ate into it the year before last and then last year to cover the revenues. So that's where a lot of it came from. But we have ninety thousand in the line this year. So it's going up a hundred and we will increase it as we have more money. And then we're gonna reduce our periodicals line to seven thousand five hundred dollars because we're not, people are not coming in, they're not reading the paper magazines like they used to and reads have so many that we're, you know, we're gonna just be more efficient there. So this is what it's going to look like big picture. Questions?
What was the periodical line in the past, Casey?
Thirteen thousand.
But I think that's important again in the narrative that we carry forward, that the periodical line is being reduced. But we know the reads line, it put us one thousand eight hundred new periodicals have been added to it. So it's another efficiency. You know, as we talk about, it's a downgrade budget, but we're living more efficiently within our budget.
Well, what we're gonna be doing, we're essentially going to be living on our, our maintenance of effort. And right now until, you know, our revenues line has never been really stable. So until we have a really good plan for that moving forward. And then, you know, to follow that up, our intergovernmental agreement comes up for renegotiation in two thousand twenty-three. And the board needs to be at the table during that renegotiation and taking into account what the needs are for growth and that kind of thing. So instead of, I think it puts us in a much more proactive position instead of going and saying we can't pay our people because you didn't give us more money. We can say, we're hanging on, this is what we can do. But if we had XYZ, we could do this. So it's a little bit different perspective.
Could we consider before we get back into the negotiations for the MOE increases, doing another public survey that we would have that and for our programming? I mean, we will, we will not have been doing a lot of the programs that we do. So let's hear what the public wants and let's have that survey in hand.
Yeah, I honestly think we might need to implement a survey every year. Right now, you know, even if it's just four or five questions to get some idea of what the community is needing or support with the tag, you know, that's something we've had on our list, it need, probably need to do this year, you know, this spring.
And, and I think with any kind of a survey too, I would like to have some feedback on our new innovations and how well they're being received. Or maybe, maybe we might get some feedback that, you know, you don't need to be doing this, we can use funding for something else then. So I can see cycling that through as we change our programming, getting feedback every year about it. Yeah.
You know, we're still, we're still doing a lot of the programming that we did that was regular program. It's just, we're not offering as many cycles of it or the demand, you know, is not quite as great. People are, are slowly you know, going, okay, this is how I want to spend my time. And so they're, we're kind of seeing where their audi, where the audience is and what the stable numbers are gonna be. Questions about this slide? All right, so this is the benefit analysis for what we're doing. We'll have an increase in positive customer service, library service experiences due to all levels of staff working on customer service desk. Now, when we say that, our plan is to have three levels of staff. We're gonna have a library technician. We're gonna have a library specialist and we're gonna have a librarian. Not all staff will work on the customer service desk the same amount of time. Depending on what their other jobs are, it'll be a sliding scale. Okay, but in the event that we have someone who is a librarian who doesn't have a big demand on their time one week and we have, you know, somebody else out in another department, they can cover shifts, you know, so it's very fluid. We'll have a greater interdependency of staff on one another, so the processes, policies and tools are maximized. Everyone will have the same message, the same content and our processes will be implemented consistently instead of kind of a hit or miss. We'll have a greater staff engagement with each other, the community at large and the community at large due to increased levels, increased levels of support, removal of structures that place hurdles between staff working together and providing solutions. So we've eliminated the department silos and staff can work together. So one of the things we're going to be able to do is right now, we have like, just say our library management software. We have, you know, five or six different levels of access. Thirty-three staff, we can train them all and give everyone the same level of access because they will understand how to use every, every level. So they won't have to go, oh, I can't help you with that. I have to hand you off to someone who has that access. We'll eliminate that kind of thing. And then we're gonna have improved financial stability because we're operating primarily on our MOE revenues, at least for the foreseeable future. So this is what we're projecting, the, the request, the approval from the board for next year's budget will be two point five one one million. And we're not bringing a budget to you to approve yet because we're, we will, that will be coming. It's not, it's not time yet. But that's what we think it's gonna be. And then this is what our new org chart graph looks like. So you've got the Board of Trustees. You've got a triangle of core team, Ari, me and Aunt Janay. And then the services that are gonna fall under those areas. Ari is Educational Services Manager and his department or his group of people, because they're not really a department, will handle education and resource curation services. Whatever that umbrella is. Administration is gonna be Administration of Physical Plant Operations. And then Financial Services and Public Relations, Aunt Janay will be Community Relations and Hospitality Services. All of the areas that will fall under, under that work scope.
Can a, can a library specialist become a librarian?
Can a what?
Can a library specialist become a librarian?
If they get their masters, yes. We move them up all the time. We, we actually have grown seven or eight library specialists into librarians since I've been here. So yes, absolutely. That's what we want. We want to be a training, we want to be a training library. We, we almost always have an intern too from not intern, but student from UT. Almost every semester we have at least one, sometimes one.
Kathy, this may be your specialty, but I'm always concerned how you, you do your promotion and your, I, I know we have performance attachments here and how, how that fits into this particular structure. Since everybody's been cross-trained to do you know, all the jobs. How do you start to assess performance of a specialist versus a librarian if they're doing basically?
They're not doing, they're not doing the same things, Logan. They're all working the customer service desks.
Oh, customer service is, is, okay.
Thousands of their jobs, yes.
In, in fact, Logan, I called Casey, you know, and we had a, a great conversation about that very point. And, and she clarified for me, no, 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 they're all working the customer service desk. They're not all doing the same job. And I said, okay, because if you don't, yeah, yeah, if you, if you, if you're, you're saying you have three, you know, levels of jobs, you, you gotta, you, you know, you have to work them like that. So, yeah, okay.
I figured that was your, your specialty, but.
Well, yeah, we had, we had a good discussion. It was, it was very helpful to hear Casey on the phone the other day. Just, you know, clarify all that for me.
This is the working structure, but now if the board approves the reduction plan, then we can spend the next three weeks fleshing out all of this. So next month you will see how, how business is gonna be done. Use the staff. It just, it's a lot. That's it, questions?
So are you looking for a motion to approve this plan? Is that what we're trying to do to?
I have to have that before I can move forward because no, no, I have to have this tonight. I have to have approval tonight.
Yeah, but, but I thought, are you through the slides?
Yeah, I'm through with the slides.
Okay, all right.
I can stop the show.
We do need a motion to accept this.
Yeah, I'm happy to make that motion.
I'll second it.
Is there a second?
Yep, I'll do it.
Thank you. Any, any discussion on, on accepting this plan? Hearing none, all in favor, would you raise your hand or say, well, raise your hand, I can see everyone, I think.
I don't know if you can see me.
Okay, all opposed? Logan, I didn't see, do you have your hand up or?
I'm up.
Okay. Okay.
That's not me.
I like that, Lauren. I'm not sure what that is.
I sound like a baby in the background.
Thank you very much.
I sometimes sound like.
Other, other other friends, funding requests?
So you, are you gonna address the director evaluation? Just tell the board what, what y'all are planning to do?
I'm sorry, I skipped that. Yes, I am. There is an evaluation packet. Last year, Casey was not evaluated. And because of the COVID and everything else that was going on. It's, she needs to be evaluated this year and the sooner the, the better. Her hire date was in January. It's over, evaluation should have been in January. But moving on, what I would like to do is a couple of things. And I've been talking to the blood personnel director, too, Jacqueline Johnson on this. I would like to have you all as a board fill out this form on Casey as best you possibly can. And make comments. And then what I'd like you to do is mail them back to myself and to Kathy Hammond, whichever you wanna do. And I've asked Kathy to, to be a co-chair with me on this evaluation. I would also then like to do what we did two years ago, Susan, and that was sit down with the board, with the staff and talk to them and have a separate feedback from them. And then thirdly, I've asked the county Personnel Department to come up with another review that goes to all of the employees and ask them their feelings on the library, how we are proceeding, how they're going to work under this new program and just an overall feel from the employees. So it's gonna be a three-way, it's a three-pronged approach. It'll probably take us a couple of months to, to get this all together. But I think it'll give us a good feeling on how we're, how we're doing going forward. So that would be, that's the way I would like to approach the review this year.
Find the ones that we would do with the employees again. Explain how we would do it with employees.
What we did was we, we sat in, in a room and the, the board members that wanted to come, hopefully all of them, but if, if.
I think that's a violation. I think that's a violation of sunshine unless it's a public meeting. If, if you have more than. If you have more than.
I've, I've gone over this with the personnel.
No actions being, just soliciting feedback, that's all.
I need to check on that about violating the sunshine law. If more than one board member meets together and it's not a public.
Oh, I see what you're saying. I see what you're saying.
Yeah.
Okay. I don't know, I'll ask Jack.
Might yet check on that.
Yeah, I would check that.
Well, but Andy, to your point, let's, let's assume for a moment that we can't do that. You still have your plans, the, the plans for approaching all of the employees through some survey kind of instrument, which is a different, a different way to get feedback. Yeah. So at a minimum, we'll have a two-part process.
Yeah, and Kathy, I think there's probably a better way because people may not wanna reveal their opinions in, in a public.
Right, right, right.
I mean, it could, if the feedback can come back anonymously from the staff and, you know, we just look at it, survey it and, you know, assess.
Just for clarification, last, the last time we did that evaluation, I know that I was in the room, they got printed materials which were basically extrapolated from the county evaluation form that really gave the board more information about how they perceived Casey from their point of view. There was no inter, we just gave them the, the evaluations. I think I wanted to be in the room because I did not want people collaborating on how they were going to fill this out. It was supposed to just be separately and anonymous like in a classroom. And, and we received those back. They had as much time as they needed to fill it out, no comments on it. And then we just looked at their responses, tabulated it and, and basically wrapped it into our evaluation too. Because there was some questions we were being asked as a board to answer that we could not answer. And Andy making that point, we just did not know the answer, that, that the employees would know the answer to that. So that was the process last time.
It was the admin team only too.
Yeah.
The whole staff. It was just people that were my direct reports.
Yeah, so.
I, I feel very uncomfortable filling out this report without additional feedback. It's, it's a tough form.
Yeah.
We love it too. I will, I will tell you that one of the things that I do is I take and I put like, if it's two, I do two, two point two, two point two, two point two five, two point five. You know, I put numbers in between. So you don't have to do a two or a three or a four, you can do, you can add, add or subtract that way.
Okay.
Casey, you, you'll be filling out the form as well, is what you're saying.
When I do my evaluations for my staff, I put points. You know, I, I, I don't, I think, you, you know, you, you're not necessarily a three or four, you know.
I think when we did this, when we did it last year or two years ago, Susan, we did that also, didn't we? We, we had 2.2 plus five or whatever.
Right.
It's too hard to come across with, with what they're asking.
And, and to come back to Stephanie.
It's not cut and dry.
To come back to Stephanie's comment, Casey did a self-evaluation and in the, sort of in the debriefing, we looked at, we tabulated what the board had to say, what the staff had to say and what Casey had to say and looked for other areas here where we're really way off. That the board has this perception in case it has this or the staff has this or that. And, and oddly enough, we were all within a couple of decimals of a point in each category. So we, none of us were completely way off in our perception of what was happening.
In this, in this other form that I've asked the county to come up with, ask them to mail it directly to the employees. And so they would then mail it directly to, back to the county personnel director. So she will then combine, combine this and then give it to Kathy and myself to review. We'll all review the form before it goes out, so we, we can have comments on it. And then we'll, then we, then we'll bring it to everyone else and we'll talk about it from there.
Okay.
So Andy, are you saying that the employee will fill out a form and send it to the county?
Yes.
Why would you do that?
You want them to be.
I'm just curious.
It would be easier for, I think, I think it would be easier for them to send it to, to an outside source than to send it directly to the director. You're certainly not going to, if I'm not happy with what, nothing is wrong, I wouldn't run it, I wouldn't send it back.
Why would you not do it online?
We are, we, we're talking, we're, we're doing it online. We're, we're, we're doing a 360, you all, evaluation.
But I mean, what I'm saying is you shouldn't have to be mailing anything. You should be able to.
What I'm saying.
He's talking electronically.
I'm old fashioned, I'm sorry. This is not postage.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And, and also if an employee doesn't want to fill it out, they don't have to.
Yeah, it's voluntary.
We're putting that in, in the base of the instructions, that this is strictly a voluntary basis.
So, so let me understand it because I'm, I have some familiar with 360. So the, the employee is going to be rating Casey, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
And, and the, and the library.
And the library.
Not, not just Casey. And the, and the library. And, and how everything is going and how they see this new sustainability plan and how it's going to work.
Okay.
From, from their standpoint.
So, so Andy, let me ask another question. So the, the, the form that our employers will be sending to the county, who is going to generate that questionnaire? And will, how, how, will it be completely different from the one that the board and the staff internally, the one that we have been using? Who's going to generate that, that?
Jacqueline Johnson. Jacqueline Johnson and her staff are making it up.
Okay.
And then whenever sent, who's going to?
She will submit that to Kathy and I to look at.
Okay, good.
Then we'll give it back to her to send out.
Okay.
And she'll use some sort of anonymous, you know, very typical online survey distribution that allows, you know, her to reach out and all of this done in an automated way and produce a report and turn it over to us.
Okay.
Okay, so if you all would look at this form that you have and try to get that back to us within the next month, I would really appreciate it.
Okay.
If you don't, then I'll call you.
Andy, I don't know if we, if we have your address.
It's way out there in the woods.
My mailing, I don't have an address up here. My mailing address is 248 Royal Oaks Drive.
You could just.
Or if you want to scan it and send it to my email address, I'll take it that way.
You can do it with your phone.
With my phone.
Just say. His address is BlackBerry, that's where he really lives.
Yeah, right, right.
Right.
What's your zip, Andy?
37801.
Okay, cool. Yeah, I'm from Old School.
Okay, any, any other questions on that? We'll, we'll get back to you on this, so, so it'll be a lot clearer as we go along.
Very good, good job.
And, and I've talked to Casey about this, talked to Kathy and so, so they're on board and the Personnel Department with the counties on board also. Okay, Casey or, or any, any funding requests? No, okay, no funding requests from either, either resource. Okay, correct me if I'm wrong, and, and this will be the last thing before we adjourn our meeting. This is Kathy Harmon's last day, last meeting with us, is that correct?
Yes.
Kathy is, Kathy is retiring. It certainly breaks, I think, all of our hearts to have her go. She has done such an incredible job for all of us in keeping us all informed in, in the, not only the library, but the board too. You know, she keeps me straight, so I really appreciate it. Kathy, you've done an incredible job for us in the future, I mean, in the past. And I hope you just have a great time retiring and, and enjoy yourself.
Thank you, thank you, everybody. I've really enjoyed my time working with y'all and I just appreciate the kind words. Thank you, Andy.
We'll miss you, Kathy.
We sure will.
Thank you.
Best of luck.
Okay, I don't have anything else except please look at the library meeting dates. The county is meeting on Thursday night. The other cities are meeting and if anybody wants to go to those, I would really encourage you to go and, and you have two minutes to talk. So please do that if you, if you want to say anything to, to the commissioners. They're, they're not, they are a friendly group.
Good.
Okay, is there, is there anything else? If not, I'd like a motion to adjourn.
Don't move.
Stephanie, thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
I see a second. Kathy, thank, thank you so much, everyone, and have a great night. And hopefully it doesn't so too bad tonight or tomorrow. And stay safe and avoid the COVID.
Very good, Andy.
Thank you, Andy.
Bye-bye.